Admission to Peace Awareness Labyrinth and Gardens is free, but you need a ticket to go inside. Head over to peace labyrinth.org for more information. The LADWP is handing out grants for qualified applicants. The LA Dodgers are beefing up Dodger Stadium. And Holly Hawk House is now a World Heritage Site. All this in City B. It's a big season for the LA Dodgers. Not only do they have the most wins, they're also getting the 2020 All-Star Game and new stadium improvements. Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilmember Gil Sadio partnered up with the team to announce the renovations that will include a new centerfield plaza, elevators, and bridges that'll connect the outfield pavilions to the rest of the stadium, along with a Sandy Koufax statue. The project is expected to be completed in time for next season. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is accepting applications for the seventh round of its Community Partnership Grants for local nonprofit organizations. The idea of the grant is to encourage new community outreach and public education efforts that engage LADWP residential and business customers on improving their energy and water efficiency and help reduce their utility bills. The Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Holly Hawk House has been named a UNESCO World Heritage Site, the first such designation in the city of LA. The former residence, now operating as a museum, was built between 1918 and 1921 in East Hollywood and was almost demolished in the 1940s. But the city of LA restored the home and the grounds, opening it up to the public in 1976. They're experiencing homelessness, but they're ready to work. In fact, they're beautifying neighborhoods in the San Fernando Valley in hopes of permanent jobs and housing. Gilaria's reports from North Hollywood.
Here's a novel idea: Why not take people who are experiencing homelessness and pay them to beautify our streets? Well, it's happening through a program called Clean Streets, Clean Starts, headed by activist Dawn Larson.
Everybody's frustrated with the homeless situation. At least out here, we're picking up trash, we're clipping trees, we're taking care of this area. We improve this area.
North Hollywood Councilman Paul Krikorian has requested the crew for several cleanups. LA City has no organized program for loose litter pickup, so this team fills a void.
They're also encountering homeless people as they go and recruiting them. So as they're doing their work, they're also doing outreach.
Today's cleanup taking place just off Lancashire Boulevard and Sherman Way in what's traditionally a heavily littered area. Volunteers receive a $25 stipend plus a referral to Hope of the Valley Rescue Mission.
The mission is the next step towards homeless services, housing, and permanent jobs. Keith Russell, who has experienced homelessness, helps conduct outreach.
We let them know that someone is we hear. You know, you're not out here by yourself. You know, we are here for you. You know, I've been there.
Gas please.
After three hours of work, it's paytime. A $25 certificate, either for gas or the 99-cent store. Tomorrow's another payday. Funding from Councilman Krikorian's office helps make this possible.
A lot of my constituents often say, "Why don't we just go and give all these people jobs so that, you know, they have a place to live and they can get a start?" That's a lot harder to do than it sounds, but that's exactly what we're doing through this program.
Clean Streets, Clean Start has been around for a few years and has spruced up neighborhoods in Northridge, Sunland Tahunga, and Woodland Hills, just to name a few. Food lovers from all over Los Angeles had the time of their lives recently at the 11th Annual Taste of Farmers Market event. The tasting extravaganza was a way of celebrating the farmers market's 85th anniversary and support LA City firefighters. Saida Pagan was there.
Kathy Bodie and her husband Fred were living their own food lover's dream at this Taste of Farmers Market event. There was tortilla soup, beef sandwiches, delectable pasta, and so much more. These angelinos got to sample all kinds of delectable cuisine provided by dozens of restaurants at the iconic Farmers Market in the Fairfax District.
Mmm, so good. Very good. Anybody who's not here, you're missing out.
Hungry guests had waited in line to get their tickets while enjoying live entertainment.
I love coffee, I love tea. I love a job with diamond, it loves me.
Los Angeles firefighters provided one of the most popular foods, homemade chili cooked up by the firefighters themselves. Proceeds from this Taste of Farmers Market benefit an organization called the First in Fire Foundation, which supports firefighters in LA and beyond.
Did you see the line? There's a humongous line that's out there, and I'm very happy that the people came out to support the First in Foundation and Farmers Market and this community.
This year's Farmers Market definitely did not disappoint. Everyone had the same word to describe the food: simply delicious.
Suzie Cook and her son Harrison were more than glad to give to a good cause. Their reward: out-of-this-world savory beef and tangy parfait.
10 out of 10. Wow, what can I say?
Is it 10 out of 10?
Incredible. My favorite.
There's coleslaw, mac and cheese, or chili cheese?
Restaurant owners were overjoyed that by sponsoring this food tasting event, they had brought the community together.
We love it. The crowds are going crazy. They love the pasta, they love the food. I mean, literally, there's hundreds of people here, they're just having a great time.
Besides tasting all that great food and drink, guests got a chance to talk one-on-one with local firefighters and learn more about what they do. In fact, it was so much fun that almost everybody was already planning ahead and marking their calendars for the next time around.
For more information on this Taste of Farmers Market and upcoming events, visit Kids and families now have a brand-new space to play in at Griffith Park as the Ferndale Park Playground swings into action.
Well, today is a very exciting and happy day. Just look behind me and look at the kids. This is the third opening of a playground in Griffith Park that we rehabilitated and brought back to life so that kids all throughout Los Angeles could enjoy the outdoors.
It's a gathering place for us and for our children, and it's nice to have somewhere to take them that's safe and that's closed off and that is a part of the community.
You know, you wake up in the morning, you're looking for something to do, you walk to your neighborhood park, and you spend the morning with your family and you meet new friends.
Playgrounds have gotten away from the old sandbox type and now has rubberized flooring, better equipment, tried and tested, where it's safer, environmentally friendly, and longer-lasting, bright colors, enjoyable. I mean, look, there's no need for me to explain, you just gotta take a look. Look at the faces of these children, how much they enjoy and approve, and that's what matters.
Enjoy a one-day festival at the Viaduct. Craving some real authentic food? Try the 21st Annual Taste of Ecuador and meet your neighbors during a hike at Griffith Park. All this and things to do. Future Sounds Festival is gearing up at the Viaduct. This one-day festival promises a ton of amazing experimental elements, including handpicked food vendors, improv poetry, projection mapping, and performance art. A mix of established and emerging acts will perform on a pop-up stage under the oldest bridge in LA. The Future Sounds Festival touches down at the Viaduct Saturday, August 3, beginning at 4:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. The 21st Annual Taste of Ecuador Food Festival is a free family event for all ages. People from around the globe will enjoy a colorful menu of Ecuadorian cuisine and other well-known food dishes. Attendees will also experience Ecuadorian crafts, musical groups, folklore customs, and more. The Taste of Ecuador Food Festival takes place at the Placita Alvera in downtown Los Angeles, Sunday, August 4, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more details, call 818-734-2701. The Sierra Club Central LA invites you to a newcomers hike at Griffith Park. Hike up to the La La Land bench, down through shady Ferndale, and enjoy views of the Hollywood Sign and the Griffith Observatory. So bring a camera, get out of the house, and prepare to meet new people at the newcomers hike at Griffith Park, Saturday, August 3, beginning at 8:30 a.m. For more info, visit act.cieraklub.org/events. Join Rabbit Days and Dumplings for a garden concert for kids. This live band, led by performer Elena Moon Park, celebrates folk and children's music from all over East Asia, reinterpreted to mixed musical traditions, languages, styles, and stories. Rabbit Days and Dumplings will strum in the fun August 3rd and 4th in the Central Garden at the Getty Center. Their performances begin at 4:00 p.m. For more details on this free kids event, visit getty.edu/museum. The Latino City Attorney Association invites you to attend the latest talk in the Conversations with Mike series. Monday, August 5, the series will present Dolores Huerta: From Farm Workers to Feminism. The event will be happening in the John Ferraro City Council Chamber, beginning at 12 noon. Space is limited, so sign up to attend today. Reserve your spot at event.rsvp@lacity.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please, uh, please take your seats. Today is Friday, August 2nd. We're in the Valley. Welcome, everyone. Uh, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busqueino Cedillo, Harris Dawson, Weezer Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Smith moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds. Continue.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to reconsider item 23, the closed session item from Wednesday, which was entitled Garcia Adal versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, you want to do that now?
If counsel would like to, yes.
Why don't we do that? So let's just open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
And that item is now before counsel, and there is a request to continue this item to Wednesday, August 14th.
Well, so ordered unless there's an objection. If you just continue going through the agenda.
Items one through nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body?
And there are cards on all items.
All right.
Item 10 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
We'll hold that as well, and that brings us where? Brings us back to, uh...
That takes counsel back to items called special or general public comment?
Okay, we're gonna start off with, uh, some multiple public comments. Candido, we're gonna ask you to come forward first. Uh, sorry, our, we're having a computer glitch, so we're gonna use the cards today until we work that out. So Candido, you have items four, six, and I believe 10, and then your general public comment. So give him three minutes to speak on those items, and then his one minute. Yes?
Mr. President, I just got out of the hospital yesterday. I have to take my medication. May I have come back a little bit because I'm not prepared? If I may, Mr. President?
No, you can. We will do our best to accommodate you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your kindness.
Mr. Sacks, would you? Are you prepared to, uh, start it this time? If so, we'll call Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks, you have items one, three, seven, and eight. Please come forward. And then your public comment.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good morning, uh, for the record, Arnold Sacks, and, uh, thank you for welcoming you to, welcoming us to your, uh, Valley House, Herb. It's not quite as, uh, luxurious as City Hall or District, what is your district? Uh, the 10th District, but we'll take it what we can. Anyway, uh, I held number one, it's, you know, you talk about, uh, rental problems and people controlling rents, and this rent is going from $360 to $1,200 per month. That's $860, $840 increase with a consumer price indexed adjustment to be included. And it's, you're gonna change a 55-year lease for the property. What year is the lease of the property right now? Is it in the beginning of the lease? Is it the end of the lease? Is any idea what year of the lease it is? Because if it's like year 10, then that covers the years of the new property. Why change the lease? Why not let the people just take over the lease as it is? You're screwing the public one way or the other, so why not do it that way? That being said, item number three and, uh, seven, oh, three refers to covenants for the property, the city loan and extending the affordability covenants. So again, we come back to what the city can do. How about some lease revenue bonds that the city can use? You know, lease revenue bonds are exactly what they say. You sell the bonds, and then the leases for whatever's being built there, or is there already, pays off the bonds. So if you want to do some improvement in an area, you talk to the landlord and you say, "You know what? We can give you some lease revenue bond money and $10 million, and you just take the leases." Instead of going to reprogram where the help, money is held in escrow, it can be actually used to pay off those bonds. So the landlord gets an improved property, the people get an improved property, and something is happening in the city. You know, this doing nothing is doing something or doing some, no, doing nothing is not doing something. Well, actually, it is if you're elected to City Council. It's part of the, it's part of the, uh, the oath you take. Promise not to do anything, and we'll get away with doing nothing. But being paid to do nothing is something else. That's a big difference, you know that? And then item number eight refers to some funding in, again, the council district offices or something, and who knows? Can we ever get the, the controller to give anybody in the public an idea of just how much money is available from each council district seat, from all the bus bench revenue and all the AB 1290 revenue and all the other sources of income that seem to come from, like, the marijuana, oh, so public comment?
Let's give him his one minute, general public.
Going back to what's available for the City Council seats, you have the marijuana excise tax that's available, you have the marijuana sales tax that you could put into a rainy day fund and pull out other funds, but we don't want to do that. We have millions of sources of funding that nobody ever talks about, but what we do talk about here, and it's a constant subject, is how the city is always so poor. The city is the poorest motherfucker city in the world, and yet, look at all the money that's floating around. Look at all the money that's floating around this city. Bonds being passed, HHS being passed, $300 million here, Metro $300 million there, $700 million there, $800 million there. The state, the city, everybody's giving money, and nobody's got any money to spend. It is freaking amazing. You know, if Rod Serling was alive, this could be a Twilight Zone episode. How in the hell does the city survive with this City Council?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's, uh, go to Mr. Spindler. So, Mr. Spindler, I have you on items two, three, four.
I thought he was a letter.
Wait, Mr. Spindler. We're all the way through 10, and your general public comment. So go ahead.
So to turn to your attention, when you look at the agenda, why is my, why is my microphone off? You don't fucking shit. Now, thank you to Mr. Cedilio, AKA Gil Cedillo, for pointing out the fraud committed on today's agenda. Turn to the back, the last page on the back. Number 10 is the Housing and Urban Development Paul Carson, AKA Marquise Harris Carson Dawson III's investigation of HUD. To you, Herb, you have been violating housing. You have done again another FBI prob. This is the third prob in less than eight months that breaks the previous record by former Councilman Hernandez and his cocaine selling operation.
Uh, apparent.
Apparent cocaine selling operation, thank you so much. So you will be charged with Section 8 fraud, you will be charged with conspiracy, and the best part is the eight contracts that Mr. Price voted for to relocate the peasants from those apartments, which will be cross-referenced in the United States of America versus current Mayor Price Jr. coming to a courthouse theater near you. Buy tickets. They're going to go very high on eBay.
What else we got?
Oh, we're going to provide in the Seiki District more police services. Eh 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 eh. Yes, over there in North Hollywood, yes. They have to have more police officers when the kids play soccer, yes, which we call football, which we call in Europe the poor man's NFL game, yes. All these kids trying to do their good business. Police officers need to protect them. And then we want to thank Nori Martinez for fighting human trafficking on today's agenda. She gets a 10 out of 10 for fighting human trafficking, but a 1 out of 10 on today's fashion choices.
Let's stay on topic.
Flabby arms do not go to sleep, lazy.
Let's stay on topic, uh, Mr. Spindler.
On the topic, man. What else is there?
Well, let's see what other interesting shit is here. It's all shit, by the way. Now, we get to the issue of the bid receiving further cleanup services, that is to help the Jews defray the cost of their property taxes.
Thank you. Let's give him his one minute.
Yes. So, I was looking in Pacer the other day, and I see something interesting that happened July the 30th, 2019 by the City Attorney's Office. And again, thank you to Eduardo and Gil Cedillo for pointing out that your attorneys committed perjury, fraud, and mail fraud and forgery on the 30th of July in federal litigation. Heh 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 heh. Yes, mere days after an FBI raid of Mike Fuhr's office, you still are fucked up. But we want to give thanks today to the most recent FBI informant that helped the raid. Thank you to Strepan Fodder for coming forward and admitting his crimes to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Thank you for cooperating with the feds. Now, next week, I'm going to bring a document that will put the shit up his faggot.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Okay, Mr. Spindler, thank you. Let's go, uh, let's get Miriam, items two through seven, and your general public comment. Please come forward.
Okay, and I'm only allowed to speak on... I forgot, how much time do you give on the, uh, on these different, uh...
You get a minute? You're getting a total of three minutes, then one minute for general public comment.
Three minutes? That's it for each item? One minute?
Yes, ma'am. It's not, in fact, it's not even that, but go ahead, your time is, is clicking down.
Well, can you reset it?
No, come on, Miriam.
Okay, all right. What I'm just saying is that I, I think that you people don't watch what you do on the affordable housing, and, um, I think the way it's being done is, is that most of this, most of this affordable housing is bogus, because a lot of people can't afford the rents here, and what you're doing is, you're bringing in a lot of people who should be, um, I don't know, um, that are not, that are not, um, contributing to our society, that are not, you're just putting them on welfare, and you just, and then they're going on our streets. There's just...
Boo, boo, throw me out.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, folks, that's right. And, and you know, they should be getting something, they should be getting something done here, not just coming in and then not having an opportunity to get work here and not to be just coming in and just coming in and doing on welfare. What kind of thing do we have on three, five, and five? Eight is, uh, I know I haven't been around for a while, but the CRA money is obviously a, uh, another ripoff to us, because that's gonna be a lot of money for us on the interest. The CRA is just, it's another ripoff agency, folks. It's been around for a lot of years, and all they do is take the money and they bank it, and they don't really do anything. This, this theater's been sitting here for 35 years vacant, so it gives you some idea how, how, uh, efficient this agency's doing, and of course, their affordable housing is, is bogus too, the whole thing. It's, it's a joke, because a lot of people can't get into this housing, and they're all ending up on the streets. You people are just taking all the money, and you're, I don't know if, who's, if there's any embezzlement or anything going on. I hope these, you guys are getting caught. Something's gotta be done to have an oversight over our elected officials now, because there's so much corruption within the, uh, the different departments. Even the people are in charge here, our City Council people, so I'm just letting you know that, uh, we need a oversight here, and there's, this is not right. Nothing's being done.
Okay, let's give her her one minute for general public comment.
Okay, the two things I'm gonna talk about right now is, okay, I want video conferencing back here, because it's too, too dangerous going down to City Council, because you guys, downtown, you allow pooping going on down there, defecating, all that stuff going on. You have no, no, no feeling for the homeless people. All you're doing is bringing, you know, the people from, uh, invading our country, and you're bringing in through Newsom. We need to recall him, folks. We got a petition out to recall him, to do something about how Los Angeles is looking like San Francisco. So it's just letting you know, it's, it's a joke on us that you people are getting away with this, and, uh, we can't allow you to do this. We need to do, uh, is to, uh, have also stopped the electioneering at our Van Nuys Neighbor Council that was done illegally, and it was, and nobody's been doing anything about it. One lady been on there for, was supposed to be on there for two more years, and she was kicked off.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Let's, uh, Mr. Previn, are you around? Okay, Mr. Previn, you have items one through nine, your general public comment. So, Mr. Previn, the mic is yours.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, right here in the Valley, and it is nice to see, you know, finally, that there are some items that have to do with the Valley out here at the, the Valley Meeting, including, you know, the Wichita Soccer Field. I know that, uh, the neighbors in that community have been under siege, and it appears that Krikorian is, uh, getting some sworn overtime in there to protect that soccer complex, which is one of the hot areas, I think, for, we have heard in the past, MS-13, if you can believe it. I, you know, obviously, this is very serious stuff, and we're very happy that there's gonna be some support there. These are our public open spaces. We have limited public open spaces. As you know, on August 6th, at Studio City Rec Center, Beeman Park, we'll be having National Night Out, so certainly, we would extend the invitation to anybody who wants to come down and take a look at our open space at that particular park. It's a great park, uh, and we're gonna have, I believe, all of the slows, Mr. Krikorian, I believe I even heard Mr. Fuhr and some of the other, uh, dignitaries are gonna be in attendance, so this is extremely, extremely exciting. Um, now, regarding the Tom Bradley Room, uh, cover, which is great, that's for December, so I applaud you for doing it now when nobody would care that it's gonna be the home stretch for your election or whatever, as you have all the LAPD up there as you head to home, and good luck with that, sir. I know it's a lot of, a lot of pressure with all of labor on your back, but, and again, pushing you forward as well, so this is a great area. You've got the rent-a-cars for the official Valley Bureau LAPD guys. They definitely need rent-a-cars. I don't know, you know, with what frequency they're renting cars in the Trafficking Bureau, and why they don't use the police cars. Uh, maybe I'm assuming they want to be John's, so maybe they need to buy a car that looks like a rent-a-car. I don't know, is that a bad idea, or a couple different ones? And then, finally, the Studio City Business Improvement District. I don't think anybody is more appreciative of their work than, uh, Krikorian. They're a very tight part of town, but to the east, where Lisa Karagian roams, they need help also, and to the other side, where, you know, there's also... So, we're happy that they've got this assessment program, they're kicking it back to Bureau Street Services. I just hope that it doesn't put them to the front of the line in any kind of way that makes it, you know, harder for those other places that have been struggling. But I assume that Krikorian has his, uh, hand on that one, and that he'll be, um, judicious. Now, the local neighbors, Harvard Westlake, have proposed some kind of, uh, private meetings. I haven't been able to get into one, they said I could come in September, but I feel that that's a little bit off, because we're learning about the nature of open space in Studio City and what the intentions were for the property. We want, we want that to remain, um, publicly accessible as a recreational asset, and I think that there's been some questions about how to define that, and I, I just raised my voice because I've been a leader in our community about these issues for the public, not just for the neighbors who are gonna be quickly bought off with preferential parking districts, as well as, uh, maybe gym passes, where they can come to use whatever Harvard Westlake decides to do. But 100% of that open space, sir, um, should not be, uh, removed from use by the public unless you have a pass. Just a small percentage should be retained for the public to use.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's give him his one minute now.
Like 30%, and they could leave those two golf balls up, or we'll go ballistic, because those are like a cultural historical landmark kind of a thing, and two soccer fields is greedy, since they only had one, they're getting Olympic-sized swimming pool and a basketball court. Let's get to the public, uh, comments, sir. I, I know you're trying with the parking around here. 8502, that was a rough week for you guys. I know you hate to jack it up one more time and wire it up for people who are having a tough time, but I wanted to, um, report that you have increased the number of preferential parking districts. Bonin has been a leader, uh, in a bad way by rolling out so many that I counted since January 2017, over 250 different kinds of neighborhood-wide restrictions that include the oversized one, which I know you have pressure, but it's just appalling to come out and then say, yesterday as he did, that, that he would have voted as the lone dove against 850, extending 8502, because he hasn't done enough with safe parking. I just have to call that out, because it enrages me that through that transportation committee is a restriction machine. I like Mike Bonin, but just step forward, sir. I mean, that is just an outrage. Plus, it's gone up, the amount of black...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, let's, uh, do Mr. Herman, items one through 10, and your general. Mr. Herman, please come forward.
What, what numbers am I on, sir? Can you repeat the numbers for me?
One through 10.
Okay. There's just some, some reason this camera's trying to film me, but let's see how it works out. See, um, just, just, just the other day, I, I read something regarding not sleeping in my vehicle, because the Fair Housing Act under the ADA Department, under Ben Carson, told Eric Garcetti, "Fuck you, Mr. Garcetti. I'm not gonna give you $80 million, because you refuse to build fair housing for disabled people." And that HUD and Section 8 refused to give me a $3,000 voucher, so I can live near the stadium, so I can go to the games. That's not right. So anyways, I want to reach out to the USA, as you see, USA, United stupid assholes of Brad Sherman, at 202-225-5911, and my, and my other congressman, Mr. Jimmy Gomez, at We need to amend these relations of negotiations for more housing, gentlemen. You know, you, you already got my call yesterday. I, I called like 20 congresspeople, like that bitch Baragon Diaz and Dianne Feinstein and Kamala cunt Harris, to report that the City Council is not doing anything in order to confer with my legal counsel action for ADA housing. So fuck all of them, perjury and fraud. And then I went into the United States, uh, again, USA, United stupid ass Weezer, because Mr. Weezer, at one of those commission meetings, had no quorum for the Olvera Street space for wetback dash 14. And we're there to support all wetbacks like myself, who want to live in, in, in a rent off of Olvera Street, Mr. President? So fuck Jose Weezer, for the record. And then I found another acronym under item number five, where mommy said OVB, and I said, "What does that mean?" She said, "Well, funding to be used by the Los Angeles Police Department of Human Trafficking Task Force." Well, I found out that the official vibe bitch, OVB, which means official vibe bitch, doesn't do nothing to eliminate the issue of trafficking in the Valley. That's why, when I got off the orange line, some woman would solicit me if I would give her a, a quarter, and I said, "No, I don't do blowjobs, sorry."
Let's stay on the topic.
Oh, yes. On item CD, uh, CD2, some fucking asshole by the name of Krikorian, uh, on motion six, he said that they're gonna build a, a, a wistet soccer complex in North, in North Hollywood, but the stupid schmuck on July 3rd committed fraud too, because he says he's an attorney, and I don't believe he is. That's why he's a fucking stupid Armenian cunt.
No, stay on the topic. Okay, now your general public comment.
So you see, ladies and gentlemen, who controls the Valley? We do. And why is that? Because, as you heard, Brad Sherman, uh, bitch Baragon of Cultural Heritage, these fucking Jews don't want to allow veterans to sleep in their cars. Why is that? Why can't a veteran sleep in their cars, you bitch? Dianne Feinstein, and you, Kamala Harris? You are so offensive. You've become a terrorist team like Jose Weezer and the City Attorney's Office, when they attack Mr. Wayne Spindler and called him a terrorist. We found out, no, you're terrorists, and we're here to support Donald Trump's action to uphold the law and have Ben Carson reach out to the mayor's office and say, "Fuck you. We're gonna send the FBI with subpoenas to question the ADA issues that you fucked up on." So fuck you, Herb.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you. Uh, Candido, you ready?
Yes, Mr. Previn.
Okay, what? Okay, why don't you come forward and-
Don't forget Edward the Bear. Mr. President, thank you for your kindness and I don't know what's going to be talking me or my medication, but you know what? I am so sick of the dysfunction here. As a taxpayer, as someone who has six properties and I pay my taxes and I have to come to this dysfunction, you know, everything is bunched up and I have to respond to everything that's four, five, six, seven. Well, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to speak from my heart because you know what? I've got assholes on both sides and I'm not your friend and I'm not your friend, but we get along, we try to get along. But the insults that continue when I disagree with Ms. Martinez, but she's insulted the way she is. If you did that to my wife, if you did that to my daughter, yeah, you go ahead and do that. You know what?
Candido, look at me, man. Look at, look at me.
This is public, this is not public comment yet, but these people-
Look at, look at me and you gotta get on, you gotta get on-
This institution, it is wrong that you insult Jews, that you insult-
Candido, you gotta get on topic now, sir.
This is the problem of the city, is the fact-
Candido, you gotta get on the items and then you'll get your general public comment.
We can't avoid this anymore.
No, but Candido, Candido, you have to get on topic.
We have to have some respect somewhere. There has to be some respect somewhere.
Okay, why don't we just go-
Let me do this, let me do this.
No, 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 why don't we just go to your general public comment and you can just finish your statement. Give him his minute for, give him his minute for general public.
You know, at one time, all of you will be leaving office and I just want to thank Mr. Greg Smith because, again, I've been here before and I've talked about all he's done for the Jeopardy program, all the kids in our area who are doing positive things because of what he's done. He won't talk about what he's done and Mr. Smith is my friend, but we don't hang out together, we don't have coffee together. But you know what that man did for me and my family when my two sons, when we lost our two sons to drugs and crime and they're both, and I'm not proud of this, they're both in, in prison and I have to go visit them every week and I see them caged up like animals. You know what Mr. Smith did? He reached out to me, he reached out to me and gave me something. 10 years ago, he gave me this. This book, this book that he gave me that was his father's book and he gave that to me. And what that, this book has done, it has carried us through my wife and my, for the last nine years. My wife has been diagnosed with dementia and I'm going to be having to put her in a nursing home, but thank you, Mr. Smith, for this. I don't want to be nursing-
Thank you, Candido. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, your time is expired. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to state for the record that as this member of the public was trying to speak to us, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman were both making noise to make it difficult to hear what the speaker, the member of the public was saying. So I would ask the president to remind Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman to sit there silently like good boys and not disrupt this meeting. It's one thing for them to spill their vile comments when they have an opportunity to speak, but when they're here as members of the audience, they need to sit here silently and let other members of the public participate.
Thank you and consider yourselves warned, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Herman. Let's bring up, uh, let's bring up Donna Pierman. Donna, come on up. You have items three through five and item eight. Yes.
Yeah, I put down his Edward the Bear.
So speak on your items.
Okay. Anyway, um, what was the numbers again? Okay.
Three through five and eight.
Three to five, okay. All right, well, we got over here, I'm talking about affordable housing. There's really no such thing as affordable housing. Yes, there's no such thing as affordable housing. We have like 40 pieces of mail, of return mail at Social Security that shows that people are living on the street, that people are living on their cars, people are part-time living with friends. So, and you're pretending to do this affordable housing when most of the items are having apartments with $3,000 a month and then you have like maybe five that you supposedly do for affordable housing. Yeah, that's really affordable housing. In the meantime, we, I get 40 pieces of return mail in Social Security for people who will never be able to prove they're disabled because there is no housing for people, there is no housing for people, there is no housing for people. Yes, they just go out and they get all the, like downtown, they're pooping on the streets. Yeah, that's perfect. That's because they have all this affordable housing that they're pooping on the streets and diseaseing downtown so I can't go downtown. Yes, that's fantastic. Oh, that's wonderful, affordable housing. And then we have number five, oh yes, I wanted to make sure that I speak on number eight for the CRA. This, it looks like CRA is not really gone, they're just pretending like it's gone. They're now going to come up and renovate the Reseda Theater, who knows what they're going to have, probably a bunch of drag queen events with transgender people and showing off. That would be wonderful for Reseda since we sensed when we had it in the library, might as well have it in Reseda Theater and that sounds like a wonderful idea. Yes, that sounds like a wonderful idea. Men dressed up like women, yes, that sounds like, um, we don't need any more CRA projects. We need to get rid of the CRA. They almost ruined the Valley completely. We got rid of it, but it looks like they're saying there's some residuals left over from LAPD. I'm not sure what the human trafficking is. So that's $30,000 and we don't even know what you're spending it on, what's HHOV, ORV, so we don't know what that is. All I know is your guys are not being responsible, telling us exactly what you're paying for. And same way with affordable housing, we're not being led to believe it's just as usual. The city council's paid some money and we just live with it and they get to choose what we have, what we do, and, and how it's done. Isn't that fantastic? In the meantime, I have 40,000 pieces of return mail and public comment.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Public comment.
Number 12, we're going to have a special election. The person to vote for is John Lee. Greg Smith would know about it. Greg Smith is doing a great job. And in the meantime, we need to follow up after Greg Smith to have John Smith. He doesn't believe in the gas tax. He doesn't believe in number EE, but this lady does. She also believes in the Green New Deal. So we can't have the Green New Deal taking away our cars, taking away our planes. Yeah, so we want John Lee, the one, he followed along, he was working with Greg Smith, he was working with this task force. Yes, that's who we need. And in the meantime, we need to also have Van Nuys video conferencing. Oh, yes, and because we need, so, because I'm scared to go downtown. And last of all, the public, the library over in Reseda is very bad. They stole a dollar from me. I put the dollar bill in there, they didn't want to help me, they say, oh, we will help you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierman, thank you.
I want my dollar back.
Thank you very much. If I could get Cory Schmidt. Cory, you have items nine, nine, one, four, and general public comment. Nine, one, and four. Yes, sir.
Oh, this is a nice mic. We should get one of these downtown. Okay, so just want to comment on everything that I just heard. Just want to let the public know, since it wasn't disclosed, that this is a public forum and that all that excrement that we just heard coming from mouths is their right. So I apologize for all that, but we do have that right. So I want to talk about item number one. I oppose this motion mainly because Felix doesn't like men and I'm kind of tired of the tangents and all the bullshit. So number four, I support this motion because even though there's a lot of assumptions and stupidity and pretty much how irritated I am, I still feel like I'm a nice guy at heart. So I support that motion. And number nine, I support this because there's a lot to clean up in this city. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that, that ends multi. Let's vote on item, items, I'm going to get, no, 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 just, let's vote on items one and two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's now vote on items six, four through six. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Eight and nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And Mr. President, there is a request to send item five forthwith.
So ordered. Okay, now on item 10, I want to call up Mr. Greenspan and then he'll get one minute for his general public comment. So you have one minute on item 10, then we'll go into your general.
Mike Greenspan, a brilliant butt-kicking Florida Gator. And item 10, I know it's going to be heard in closed session, i.e., there's going to be some hanky panky going on, but bottom line, didn't Ben Carson, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, just withhold $80 million because there's problems with the Americans with Disabilities Act? Hey, who knows? Since the FBI's been a regular visitor to LA, I'm sure they'll be visiting you people in city housing also. And I'm not prejudiced, I don't care if you city officials go to Terminal Island to your prison time or Atlanta federal prison.
Let's stay on item 10, Mr. Greenspan.
Well, we're talking about some very illegal things which could cost people prison time.
You're going to talk to item 10, please, sir.
Okay. Fine, and have a good trip to Leavenworth. I sure hope you enjoy it.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, LeBron James came to the LA Lakers with high expectations. However, he got injured in his first season in LA. During his downtime, he has become an executive producer, i.e. the money man for the show The Chase. As a result, he has brought the Ku Klux Klan to Hollywood. I'm talking about Clanor Tim Tebow of the Fucking Baptist and the Klan. Armando Herman is right, women give their pussies to be in Hollywood, but LeBron James gives the keys of Hollywood to the Ku Klux Klan. Shame on you, Magic Johnson and Jeanie Buss for enabling LeBron James to bring the Fucking Baptist and the Klan to Hollywood by giving him a fat contract. LeBron James didn't even bring the Lakers to the playoffs, but he brought the Ku Klux Klan to Hollywood. Shame on you again, Magic Johnson and Jeanie Buss. At the same time, women are giving their pussies to be in Hollywood. Fucking Baptist and the Klan, you bullions fucking suck.
All right, so now if I could have Joanne, Joanne, come forward. We're going to do general public followed by Mr. Gus, followed by Sean Murphy. Joanne.
Good morning. Joanne Yovanikar, West Hills Neighborhood Council and budget advocate for the southwest San Fernando Valley. I have four things to be thankful for. Number one, Mr. Smith sent out a notice before July 4th calling for foster parents for the LA City Animal Shelter. We not only became foster parents, but we adopted Bronco, a six-year-old German Shepherd that day, okay? I want to be thankful for appointing Marty Adams as the general manager, the LEDW P. I think he's going to do a bang-up job. I want to thank the council for putting in the EV chargers in City Hall and now I wish they would put them over on the Street on Sylvan, the parking lot there. That would be a great thing. I want to thank your office for providing the security for our budget day, which was really a big-
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Okay, Mr. Gus, followed by Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy. Yes, sir, the mic is yours.
Councilmembers, as you saw in my column in City Watch this week, I am exposing Mayor Garcetti's use of a private email account to shield public business, a PRA which he has avoided since January. The city is going to get hit with a very costly consequence about that, probably by this time next week. You're going to get hit with a really costly consequence of that. But I want to point out that various city agencies, including most of your offices, have passed due PRAs and the time for my patience in filling them has run out. Specifically, an example is Mr. Sidio, who is all smiles alongside the way this morning. But as soon as I said, Gil, why is your office hiding public documents? The smile disappeared from his face and he turned and walked away. My patience with PRAs has run out and the bill is coming due. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Why don't you fix your F kiosk? I mean, nobody told me the kiosk wasn't working. Bring back video conferencing. It's, sometimes I can't make it downtown. I have, I put up, I live in CD3. It's probably going to be too hard for me to get downtown, so bring back video conferencing right here.
Thank you. Okay, that ends multi-comment and general public comment. Let's move Madam Clerk to item three. Item three, I have King Chung, Craig Wong, is that Eva Adias? Come forward. Monica Ruiz. Sharon, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is King Chung.
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is King Chung. I'm a member of the Chinatown Community for Equitable Development, which work with tenants and workers. I'm here to, first of all, to send Councilman Sidio and Councilman Weston for putting item three on the agenda to help the 636 North Hill Place tenants, we call them Hillside Villa tenants. And, you know, without the affordable housing, by extending the covenant, the tenants will be evicted and there are no place to go. And it's very important. So there's a lot of stress right now and we hope that the council, city council passed the ordinance, the motion. And also, I want to find out that the tenants want me to ask that they would need more details about this motion and the deal.
Thank you.
And hopefully, the deal can-
Thank you, sir.
Tell us more-
Thank you. We have other individuals that are here from the Chinatown area. Why don't you just kind of line up? All of the folk that are here to speak on the Chinatown issue, why don't we line up behind this gentleman? Yes, sir, identify yourself.
My name is Craig Wong. I'm with the Chinatown Community for Equitable Development. We're a community-based organization in Chinatown and we support the Councilman Sidio's motion to extend the affordable housing contract at Hillside. Chinatown is in crisis. We see rents are rising, we see affordable housing contracts are expiring, particularly the tax credit housing. Longtime residents are being displaced. This is what we see on the ground. So we need affordable housing. We need housing security where people know that their rents will not increase. And we support the motion to extend the affordable housing contract at Hillside. I think for the tenants, they need to know that it will last for 10 years, that the contract will last for 10 years and they will not have exorbitant price increases. I think there needs to be more details provided to the tenants, they need to know for sure and there needs to be more transparency and accountability.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. If I could get the next speaker, please come and identify yourself. Your name?
Antonia Salazar.
Put it, put it, name?
My name is Antonia Salazar. Buenos dias. Estoy aquí representando a los apartamentos Hillview Apartments.
Good morning, my name is Antonia Salazar. I'm here to represent the Hillview Apartments.
Este, tenemos el problema de que ayer recibimos una noticia que ya nos aumentaron la renta para el primero de septiembre y eso no estaba en el, en el, en el plan porque ya nos habían dicho.
Yesterday we received news that-
It's working, go ahead.
Yesterday we received news that we had our rent increase for the first of September and it was through a letter.
Y eso no estaba en el plan porque en el contrato que nos habían dicho, en el papel nos habían dado diez años sin pagar, sin subir la renta.
And that was not part of the original plan or contract. We were initially given 10 years without going to have any kind of rent increase and-
Y ayer recibimos la nota que la renta se nos sube para el- Y ayer recibimos la nota que la renta se nos sube para el primero de septiembre.
And yesterday we received the notification that rent will increase, as a matter of fact, on the first of September.
Y creo que eso no es justo.
I believe that is not fair.
Mucho menos a las personas mayores como yo. Soy retirada, ciudadana. Tengo veinticuatro años viviendo ahí.
Especially folks like me. I am a senior citizen living there for twenty-four years. I am retired.
Este quisiera que venimos a aplicarle al señor Sevilló, hacérselo saber lo que pasó este día. De esa carta quisiéramos que él nos ayudara.
We would like to inform Mr. Sadio of the letter and what has occurred, and we hope that he can help us with this.
Confiamos en él. No queremos más humillaciones. No queremos tanto estrés, tanta enfermedad que nos ha pasado.
We trust in him. We no longer want to be sick. We don't want to be stressed out. So many things have been happening to us.
Tenemos siete meses trabajando en esto, y nos había ido bien porque nos prometieron eso.
For now, seven months we've been working on this, and things are going very well because we had been promised this.
Y ahora se nos bajó el ánimo de vuelta por eso que nos dijeron, por esa carta que recibimos.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And now we're feeling very bad about it because of the letter. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Buenos dias. Yo soy Adela Cortez. Soy del 636 North Hill Place.
Good morning. My name is Adela Cortez. I'm from 636 Rose Hill Place.
Yo tengo treinta años viviendo allí, y de donde yo vivi, donde, en otro edificio, me tumbaron y me pasaron para allí, y yo estoy muy enojada por eso, porque el manager fue a las cinco de la tarde.
I've been there, I've lived there for thirty years now, and I'm also very upset because I was taken out of that building to another building because of the manager, and I'm very upset.
Porque él fue con una persona y su hijo, y al manager se escondió. Si él es muy hombre, ¿por qué no da la cara? ¿Por qué manda el hijo?
And he left, and he sent someone and his son. And I want to know, if he's such a man, why didn't he come instead of his son?
Y eso es lo que yo quiero, que ya nos deje en paz, que nos deje. Ya es una, mucho estrés que nos está dando, y a mí me operaron de cáncer, y yo luché mucho. ¿Para qué él está haciendo eso? Y me dijo el doctor que yo no puedo hacer. Corajes.
And I, please, want to ask you that I, it's been a lot of stress. I want your help. I've actually been diagnosed with cancer. The doctor said I cannot be so angry all the time, so I need your help.
Y le pido al hombre que se aprente a nosotros y a la hija. ¿Por qué se esconde? Que dé la cara.
And I want this man to know, why is he hiding from us? Have him show us his face.
Okay, gracias.
All right, thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Monica Ruiz. Vengo representando al edificio del 636 North Hill Place.
Hi, good morning. My name is Monica Ruiz. I'm here to represent the building of 636 Rose Hill Place.
Este nomás venimos todos a suplicarle al señor Sevilló que, por favor, que nos siga, que nos ayude porque ya teníamos un plan que nos iban a ayudar, y de nuevo comienzan el estrés a empezar, los papeles a llegar otra vez.
And we are here to ask Mr. Sadio to please help us. We were doing well, and now we have stress again because of this building and the notification received over this letter.
Necesitamos que nos escuchen, porque somos latinos, nos quieren, nos quieren humillar. Tenemos que seguir adelante, pero también necesitamos el apoyo del señor.
We want to be heard, not just because we're Latinos. We should be ignored. We want to have the support. We want to be heard by the gentleman.
Este pues todas las personas son mayores y son personas enfermas, y, por favor, queremos ya que paren de estarnos.
Everyone here is elderly, so please, we are sick, we are old, we want your assistance. We are here asking for help.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Gracias. Buenos dias. Yo soy Eva Arias, y vengo representando aquí a mi, a mi, a mi hijo y mi persona. Yo vivo en el 636 North Hill Place, apartamento 415 de Los Angeles, California.
Hi, good morning. My name is Eva Arias. I'm here representing the building as well, 636 at Rose Hill Place, myself, my person, and my son.
Y los dos estamos enfermos del, tenemos alta presión, y ya no aguantamos ese bullying que nos están haciendo.
We are both ill. We both have high blood pressure, and we no longer can put up with the bullying that is occurring.
Psicológicamente ya no estamos bien, y, por favor, le pido que, que, que respeten el día que habían hecho de que un año no iban a subir la renta. Digo, diez años, perdón.
And we ask for your help. Please respect the contract that was done, the deal that was done for ten years.
¿Por qué violan la ley? Les suplicamos, por favor, que nos ayude señor Sevilló. Muchas gracias. Que tengan buen día.
Why would you violate the law? And please, we ask for your help. Mr. Sadio, assist us.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name is Sharon Chung, and I live in 636 North Hill Place, and I come here to complain about the owner of the building, because every time, every day, he tried to keep the nose and put on the door, and every time it's different. You know, he say that he will change the lock, and if we didn't move out, they will let the security come and pick we and kick we out. You know, does he think he's, can do anything because he have money? You know, we poor, but we have a dignity, and we have a, we are human. We're not an animal. He's the one is animal, you know? Because he, he do everything, try to, you know, to avoid the people.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more speakers? Mr. Sadio, I believe that's all the speakers on item three, so the floor is yours.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and colleagues, let me, if I may, take a, take a second to summarize this situation. This incredible experience that's taking place over at the Hillside Vias in Chinatown came as a result of the agreements that were made thirty years ago with the CRA. So when people ask, well, what did the CRA do? The good that they did was that they entered into agreements with private developers to create affordable housing for the city of Los Angeles. The city doesn't build housing, developers build housing, and the CRA entered into agreement throughout the city, and ten thousand units of affordable housing was built thirty years ago. These covenants are now expiring, and so all of us are going to be confronted with the loss of ten thousand units of affordable housing. So keep that in mind. At a very moment that we're trying to build seventy-five-hundred units of affordable housing with one point two billion dollars, we are on the other end in a position of likely to lose ten thousand units of affordable housing. So given that, we were engaged with our tenants, this is the third agreement we've been able to, to rescue, engaged with our tenants, and were able to work out an agreement with both the tenants. I want to commend the leadership of the housing, Rushmore, Cervantes, and his team, Doug Swoger and Stephen Sweet, the team with Natalie Menev from Legal Aid, and the leadership and the team and the residents at the Hillside Via. What we're asking today is that this be codified. But I want to take the moment to talk about what the agreement was. We're very pleased to say that part of that agreement was no rent increases for ten years, no displacement for ten years. The agreement looks back to the original rent increases, which were at the end of November of last year. This is a ten-year agreement. We've worked with, and we are working with, the County of Los Angeles, the State of California, and with the entities here in the city of Los Angeles. The good news is, we're here today to move this motion so that the city attorney can codify the agreement. And at the end of the day, we will not have the displacement. We will continue to protect the affordability. We will defeat displacement. But I want to caution everyone that we need to note this, because this is not something that we can do on our own, and that there's a proposal in Sacramento, SB Five, written by Jim Bell. We've been in communications with him, and it's that proposal that will replace the affordability that was developed by the CRA. And so SB Five will create the funding so that we can protect this affordability and build new affordable housing. The other component of it is that it has workforce development. It does not have economic development, but has workforce development and the development of affordable housing. We are committed to working with the governor's office, with the author, and the leadership in the legislature to see that this passes, or that some form of this passes, so that we have the funding to protect the ten thousand units that are in place. These tenants are well organized, articulate, can speak for themselves, have been engaged in this process, have pulled resources together. They're extremely resourceful, and they should be proud of their accomplishment, of bringing us here to this moment. But as I say, it's a moment that while we celebrate it, we must be vigilant. We don't understand why the counsel for the owner, Mr. Botts, would go ahead and begin to issue notices of rent increases when we have, in fact, this agreement in place, and we're simply waiting for it to be codified and signed by all the parties. And it's a moment that we have to look at so that we know that we go from this particular to a broader general policy that will ensure the protection of affordability and the defeat of displacement in our city. So with that, I would ask for your support of this motion so that we can move this. An incredible victory for the tenants, for the community, for the department, for all those who have worked on this. An incredible victory for us all that we can codify that and move this forward. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Let us members prepare. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't... Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and applaud our colleague Gil Sadio for his leadership on this issue. We're dealing with something very similar right now, a covenant that's expired, and this council took a position supporting SB Five, and I believe it was introduced by Mr. Caretz. It's a great bill. I met with Senator Jim Bell in Sacramento last month. We're going to meet again next month when I go back. We really need to get in the game of working closely with our delegation locally and then across the state on state measures that effectuate the kind of change we need, like Senator Bell's, for example. We also need to really work with our local delegation on Reforming Costa Hawkins and the Alice Act. These measures are leading to people being displaced by the thousands across the whole city. So I just want to rise and applaud you, Mr. Sadio, for this, and it's something that we need to stay on the pathway. We really need to be on the pathway to support measures like this until we have the kind of change from the state, and then look for, and then look for local solutions, explore local solutions with the resources we have, all at the same time while we're building this HHH housing. So this is one step in the right direction, and I think that we have to have a permanent pivot in this direction, because, as you said, Mr. Sadio, while we build this HHH housing, and we're building rent covenant of affordable housing by the thousands across the city, however...
Mr. Sax, hold on one second. Mr. Sax, please. Mr. Sax, you're disrupting this meeting. Go on, Mr. O'Farrell.
However, we have to be mindful that at the same time, we are, these other covenants that were effectuated thirty years ago are expiring, and that's not going to change anytime soon. So it's kind of all hands on deck and exploring the entire spectrum of approaches to get a handle on this displacement crises that gives the kind of relief for these residents that they so desperately need. So I think a unanimous aye vote is forthcoming, and this will help create a template moving forward for many other of these sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. I believe that brings us to our closed-session item. So sergeants, if we would clear the chambers, if we would clear the chambers at this... Yes, that's fine. One staff.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert L.A. County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert L.A. County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert L.A. County.
Knowing when you need it most.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers.
Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watts Towers Arts Center Campus. Come visit the Watts Towers Arts Center Campus. Well, you'll see exhibitions, the Watts Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel, covered with mortar, and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watts Towers are truly unique and receive cultural heritage monument status from the city of Los Angeles in nineteen sixty-three. Like the community, the Watts Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watts Towers Arts Center is a guardian of the Watts Towers. It provides programs, design for cultural enrichment, and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watts Towers Arts Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
It's wonderful to celebrate the Thai culture and how long the Thai community has been in Los Angeles, helping to make us a more vibrant, diverse culture. I love the spirituality of the Thai people. There is a generous heart and a generous spirit that courses through the veins of people who are of Thai heritage.
You know, with a lot of divisiveness in our society, the lotus festival brings people together.
It's a good environment. It's nice to see a lot of people come together and...
Diversity is good.
My name is Ken Pratt, deputy executive officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station. Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style, an innovative blend of Spanish colonial, mission revival, and art deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive art deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive historic cultural monument designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center. It is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, deputy executive officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover
Congratulations on your new job.
I appreciate it. It was one of the most humbling experiences that I've ever had. It's amazing when you can see animals as close.
And where are you from?
I am from the San Gabriel Valley. I was born and raised in Altadena, California. Certainly, being the first means that I won't be the last, right? There are other people who paved the way for me, and it makes me even that much more humbled and excited about the opportunity to be a role model for other young women.
Metro's program for older adults called On the Move Riders Program hosted its second race on records here in the beautiful historic ticketing concourse at Union Station. We like to host these events to encourage older adults to come out and learn how to
We look coming. It is funny. It is special for us. And one thing that I love is it is very playful. It's not serious, so you feel connected.
It's great because you feel the energy from everyone. You have, in LA, a lot of times in LA theater, you don't get to have audiences that are this large. Sometimes we'll have 1,500 people, so it's a lot of energy that you have to give to an audience of that size, which is really great.
I think it's important to have something like this where, you know, family can come and not have to take out a mortgage to go to the theater.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm, Pierra &amp; Look, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern goobi architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity in the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles's strive to be the
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was, let's do one big event. You can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Now that summer is here, there are a lot of terrific events that you and your family can enjoy throughout the San Fernando Valley. I'm proud to announce that I'm kicking off the third year of NoHo Summer Nights. NoHo Summer Nights will bring live outdoor concerts to North Hollywood Park at the corner of Magnolia and Tahunga every Saturday night through August 3rd, beginning at 7:00 p.m. And best of all, all of these events are entirely free and completely family-friendly. This summer, we've got a really impressive lineup of live performances from popular bands that you'll enjoy, including tributes to Tom Petty, Elton John, and The Beatles, along with Latin, Middle Eastern, hip-hop, Celtic, and Ukrainian music. You won't want to miss a single beat or a single concert. You'll find the full concert schedule on Facebook at NoHo Summer Nights. At NoHo Summer Nights, you can bring your own food and your non-alcoholic beverages from home, have a terrific picnic in the park, and enjoy some of the best music you're going to hear all summer. Please come out and experience all the great things that NoHo has to offer by putting NoHo Summer Nights on your summer calendar. Bring your friends, bring your family, bring your neighbors. I hope to see you all this summer at North Hollywood Park for NoHo Summer Nights.
There's an expression, "many hands make light work." This is an example of that. We see all of these young people here who could be doing any number of things on a beautiful Saturday morning, but instead of doing those things for themselves, they're
We're out here, fresh air, we get to hang out with 120 kids. It's not too much better than that.
It's something that we look forward to, the kids look forward to, and it's a memory they'll take through the rest of their lives, hopefully, and they'll pay a toll on it.
Looking forward to having fun, having a good time.
Anything and everything that we can do to help them is definitely worth it, and
We've been doing this for like the last, I think, four or five years, and it's growing. So we're excited about being here, and as you can see, there's a lot of people here, and people came all the way from Palmdale and from Arizona just to be here.
We can just enjoy the summer, so for me, it's good. And we can spend here, I love music.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Knowing when you need it most.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watch Towers. Hi, my name is Rosie Lee Hutz. I'm Director of the Watch Towers Art Center Campus. Come visit the Watch Towers Art Center Campus where you'll see exhibitions, the Watch Towers of Simon Ordia, our garden studio with turtles and tortoises, and California natives. This massive man-made sculpture is made of steel covered with mortar and embellished with mosaic tiles, glass, clay, shells, and rocks. The Watch Towers are truly unique and receive Cultural Heritage Monument status from the city of Los Angeles in 1963. Like the community, the Watch Towers have a strong foundation and recycles different types of materials to create something breathtakingly beautiful. The Watch Towers Art Center is a guardian of the Watch Towers. It provides programs designed for cultural enrichment and museum and art education to the Los Angeles community and the world at large. With the recent adaption of the South Los Angeles and Southeast Los Angeles community plans, the Watch Towers Art Center community will continue to shine and serve as the pulse of the community.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
It's wonderful to celebrate the Thai culture and how long the Thai community has been in Los Angeles, helping to make us a more vibrant, diverse culture. I love the spirituality of the Thai people. There's a generous heart and a generous spirit that courses through the veins of people who are of Thai heritage.
You know, with a lot of divisiveness in our society, the lotus festival brings people together.
It's a good environment, it's nice to see a lot of people come together and...
Diversity is good.
My name is Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer for Metro. Welcome to Union Station.
Welcome to Union Station, the transportation hub in the heart of Los Angeles. This is your stop for LA history, art, and culture at the largest multimodal passenger terminal in the western United States. For millions of people traveling to and through the city of Los Angeles by train, Union Station will be a stop along their journey. Since opening in 1939, the Los Angeles Union Station has been regarded as the last of the great train stations. It is also considered one of LA's architectural gems, featuring a Mission Modern style and innovative blend of Spanish colonial, Mission Revival, and Art Deco architecture. Designed by a father-son architect team, John and Donald Parkinson, Union Station was created with the California lifestyle in mind. Union Station offers a spacious ticket concourse that includes a 110-foot-long American black walnut ticket counter, a waiting room with 40-foot windows adorned with brass, massive Art Deco chandeliers, inlaid marble floors, hand-painted Mission tiles, and expansive shaded patios, towering palm trees, and a 100-foot clock tower. These architectural features, along with its history and cultural significance, have helped Union Station receive Historic Cultural Monument designation from the city of Los Angeles in 1972 and recognition by the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Today, Union Station is more than just a transportation center, it is an experience for both visitors and commuters. It is home to the Trax Restaurant, one of the city's most unique formal culinary experiences, and the Imperial Western Beer Company and Streamliner Bar, as well as a variety of casual eateries. Artwork from locally renowned artists can also be seen throughout the station. Take the Metro or the Dash and enjoy the sights, bites, and culture of this architectural marvel and Los Angeles landmark. I am Ken Pratt, Deputy Executive Officer with Metro, and I invite you to come and discover Union Station.
Congratulations on your new job.
I appreciate it. It was one of the most humbling experiences that I've ever had. It's amazing when you can see animals this close. And where are you from? I am from the San Gabriel Valley. I was born and raised in Altadena, California. Certainly, being the first means that I won't be the last, right? There are other people who paved the way for me, and it makes me even that much more humbled and excited about the opportunity to be a role model for other young women.
Metro's program for older adults called On the Move Riders Program hosted its second race on records here in the beautiful historic ticketing concourse at Union Station. We like to host these events to encourage older adults to come out and learn how to use buses and trains.
We love coming, it's funny, it is special for us. And one thing that I love is it is very playful, it's not serious, so you feel connected.
It's great because you feel the energy from everyone. You have, in LA, a lot of times in LA theater, you don't get to have audiences that are this large. Sometimes we'll have 1,500 people, so it's a lot of energy that you have to give to an audience of that size, which is really great.
I think it's important to have something like this where, you know, family can come and, you know, not have to take out a mortgage to go to the theater.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrara &amp; Look, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel reinforced concrete legs with stucco. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century Vana Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles and the futuristic designs intended to convey new prosperity and embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
The goal of Grammy Camp is to take these students who have a passion for multiple areas of music, on the business side, on the technical side, and on the performance side, and give them a sense of what the music industry is like and get them developing a plan to help them reach that goal because that's what gives them the best chance of being successful. If I do some of the things that we're talking about here and think of other things, I can be where these guys are.
People come to the market and they find their favorite restaurants and they kind of get into the same habit, but there's so many great places to try. So the idea was let's do one big event, you can get samples from everybody, and here we are 10 years later and everything's great.
I have some chili pasta and fried chicken with lemonade. I'm just getting started.
Now that summer is here, there are a lot of terrific events that you and your family can enjoy throughout the San Fernando Valley. I'm proud to announce that I'm kicking off the third year of NoHo Summer Nights. NoHo Summer Nights will bring live outdoor concerts to North Hollywood Park at the corner of Magnolia and Tahunga every Saturday night through August 3rd beginning at 7:00 PM. And best of all, all of these events are entirely free and completely family-friendly. This summer, we've got a really impressive lineup of live performances from popular bands that you'll enjoy, including tributes to Tom Petty, Elton John, and The Beatles, along with Latin, Middle Eastern, hip-hop, Celtic, and Ukrainian music. You won't want to miss a single beat or a single concert. You'll find the full concert schedule on Facebook at @NoHoSummerNights. At NoHo Summer Nights, you can bring your own food and your non-alcoholic beverages from home, have a terrific picnic in the park, and enjoy some of the best music you're going to hear all summer. Please come out and experience all the great things that NoHo has to offer by putting NoHo Summer Nights on your summer calendar. Bring your friends, bring your family, bring your neighbors. I hope to see you all this summer at North Hollywood Park for NoHo Summer Nights. There's an expression, "Many hands make light work." This is an example of that. We see all of these young people here who could be doing any number of things on a beautiful Saturday morning, but instead of doing those things for themselves, they're coming here to be helpful to others.
We're out here, fresh air, we get to hang out with 120 kids. It's not too much better than that. It's not too much better than that.
This is something that we look forward to. The kids look forward to, and it's a memory they'll take through the rest of their lives. We hope we are helpful.
Looking forward to having fun, um, having a good time.
Anything and everything that we can do to help them is definitely worth it, and I'm excited to be at camp lesson for the 13th time.
We've been doing this for like the last, I think, four or five years, and it's growing. So we're excited about being here, and as you can see, there's a lot of people here. And people came all the way from Palmdale and from Arizona just to be here.
We can just enjoy the summer. For me, it's good. And we can spend here. I love music.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family.
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert L.A. County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert L.A. County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert L.A. County.
Knowing when you need it most.
There are things in every city that speaks to the heart and soul of every community. In San Francisco, it is the Golden Gate Bridge. In Chicago, it's the Bean. In New York, it is the Statue of Liberty. In South Los Angeles, it's the Watts Towers.
Ready to go. Thanks, guys. All right, let's, uh... Gotcha. Okay, let's, uh, let's, uh, open, go back into open session, Sergeant. Go back into open. So let's let everybody in. Okay, we're good to go? All right, Madam City Attorney, if you can read the motion?
Yes, the motion moves relative to the matter of the negotiations regarding a voluntary compliance agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, item 10 on today's council agenda, that the city administrative officer be authorized to execute the proposed voluntary compliance agreement between the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the city of Los Angeles dated August 1st, 2019.
All right, let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, and that'll be forthwith? All right. It's my understanding we have one item left on the agenda?
Yes, item 7, and a substitute motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay. Anyone, uh... Okay, I have no cards. I have no cards on this item. Let's prepare to vote.
And this would be a two-vote item? The first vote would be whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now let's vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, is there any further business before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. If all members could rise for adjourning motions, uh... Okay, Mr. Buscagno will start. Wait, Mr. Sedia, we're at adjourning motions? If all in council chambers would please rise?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we rise and adjourn in memory of Wayne Bettis, 77-year resident of San Pedro, 53-year state farm agent, passed away peacefully at the age of 84 on July 19th at Torrance Memorial Medical Center. Dedicated, he was dedicated to serving his community, loved woodworking and spending time with his family. I'm told by friends he was very active with the Rotary Club in San Pedro and helped lead as a committeeman of the Fisherman's Fiesta, which was a known fiesta that brought millions of people back in the day to San Pedro. He is survived by his wife Barbara, the three loving children, Gary, Gary's wife Lori, Christie, John, John's wife Diane, their families, including seven grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Viewing will be held at Green Hills Mortuary on August 6th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Celebration of Life will be held at the San Pedro Fish Market on Wednesday, August 7th from 4:00 to 9:00. In lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club or the Beacon House. Wayne Bettis Jr., may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian, did you have a... Okay, are there any, Mr. Price? What we can go into now? First, are there any more adjourning motions? Okay, announcements? Mr. Price?
I just want to acknowledge the fine work that my deputy Edgar Morales has done over the past several years. He's going to be moving on to law school.
Okay, congratulations.
He's going to Loyola. Edgar started as a driver. He did some work in the district office and in City Hall, helping us in planning and land use issues most recently, so we're excited for his achievements in CD9 and look forward to his progress as an outstanding legal scholar.
Edgar, you're a great guy. Congrats, man. Wish you the best. Mr. Krikorian?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just thought that it was important that we make note today that this is the two, today is the 250th anniversary of the naming of Los Angeles. When the Deansa expedition came north through Alta California, August 2nd of 1769 was the day that Father Crespy, as well as Gaspar de Portolá, came to the Los Angeles River and it was the first time Europeans had seen that river and named it Nuestra, El Río de Nuestra Señora de Los Ángeles de Porciúncola, which was the beginning of our city. On August 5th of 1769, which is next Monday, Europeans first stepped foot in the San Fernando Valley where we are today, when that same expedition crossed through the Sepulveda Pass and made camp at what we now recognize as Los Encinos State Historical Park and made peaceful contact with the natives who were residing in both of those areas, and that was the beginning of our city 250 years ago today. It's appropriate, I suppose, that shortly after naming Los Angeles, the expedition experienced three earthquakes on that very day, but this is a very momentous anniversary, I think, for the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you for that, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Smith?
The first words were, "God damn it, it's hot out here."
Mr. Sedia?
En español por favor.
Mr. Sedia?
Yes. Mr. Price, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Our office also would like to note that Edward Charles Ramirez, known as Charlie, in our office will also be leaving to law school. Today is his law, Boston, he's headed to Boston. And will be leaving, um, our office. He played a major role in our settlement and helped us make sure that the numbers were right as we were exchanging proposals back and forth, pulled together quickly some spreadsheets so that we could evaluate the proposals from the building owner, which were a little off once we put a little, uh, what do you call that? Microscope or whatever on the numbers. Anyway, we were able to find out that those numbers weren't really what they thought they were. Yeah, trust but verify. And has spent a very rich summer with us, and so we thank him for his service. He comes from a family of rich in public service, and we know that he will continue in that, and we look forward to his return from Boston with all haste.
Well, congratulations and good luck to you as well. Mr. Smith?
For seriousness, I think none of you have already heard this, but if not, and for the public's edification, this morning, arrest warrants were served in Riverside for the three men who committed the murder of our detective, our officer Juan Diaz. The great detectives at robbery homicide have actually worked 24 hours a day for seven days in a row to solve this, and they came up with a people. They're now in custody, and we will move forward to take them to trial. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Okay, is there any more business before this council? Members of this council is adjourned.